Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We want to welcome everyone to today's regular meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council on Monday, the 6th of February, 5th of February. And ask the city clerk to call a roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Sander is absent. Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Here.
Mayor Budge.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to read the television announcement?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, February 8th at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, February 9th at 3:00 p.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
So we do want to welcome the people also who will be watching this on a webcast or on cable TV. And we also want to welcome the people who came to speak tonight, whether you came to speak under public comment or as a part of an agenda item. If you would please fill out the speaker identification card at the back of the room and hand that into our city clerk. That way, we will ensure that we have your, the fact that you want to speak, and we will be able to follow up with you if you need that to happen. We also want to welcome all the wonderful people who came today from Pro Youth, and they will be on later. At this point, we are going to celebrate the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will have, we will invite you all to remain standing after the Pledge of Allegiance for an invocation by Kyle Kirchner from River City Christian. And we will be led by the pledge, at the, in the Pledge of Allegiance by Jim Tavucci, who is the Executive Director of the Sacramento Mandarin's. Jim?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim.
And we pray. Lord God, we are grateful for the opportunity as the city of Rancho Cordova to move forward, to see opportunities for us to be a place that finds peace for people, finds hope for families, and builds strong communities. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here, and, Lord, we ask for wisdom and guidance in the decisions that make, that take place today. We're grateful, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much. Please be seated. So we have several presentations tonight, and the first one is recognition of the 2018 Youth at City Council. Do we have a staff person or anything involved?
We do not have a staff person, although Stacy Delaney, communication, or Community Enhancement Analyst, has been helping to support this program, but we would like to call up Wendy to the podium.
And we'll acknowledge that Councilmember Sander just arrived. So this is actually the third year that we've supported Pro Youth and Families through our Community Enhancement Fund, and we've contributed more than $225,000 to build civically involved young people who become involved stakeholders in the city's success, supporting the healthy development of young people in the city, and improving public safety through youth-led projects in schools and the community. Each year, there are three programs that take place, the Youth at City Hall, Summer at City Hall, and a Community Investment Project. And I know personally the value of this, there is a young lady down the street from me who has grown and blossomed in this program. And when you consider when she came here, she was not very conversant in the English language even. Again, her, her growth has been phenomenal, and I know that she has thoroughly enjoyed this program and is at the point where she's applying to colleges based in part on what, well, it actually based a lot on the involvement she learned here. She took it to school, and now she's using it to help her get into college. So Wendy, do you want to explain the three different programs and what they're all about?
Yeah, sure. Well, good evening, city council members, and thank you for the introduction, Mayor Budge. I'm Wendy, the lead facilitator for the wonderful 2018 cohort of 26 Cordova High students. Pro Youth and Families is committed to strengthening families and communities by developing neighborhood networks, identifying and addressing needs, and providing trainings and resources that inspire, educate, and mobilize young people. Thus, it is through young people like them, youth who are willing to step out of their comfort zone, learn about their local governments, and make a change in their communities, that we are given the opportunity to continue running such a beneficial civic engagement and youth advocacy programs such as this. Through Youth at City Council, youth fellows will learn about the core values of democracy along with their inner workings of local, county, and state governments, and a sprinkle of federal government. And towards the end of the program, students will have an opportunity to research, develop, and advocate around issues that affect them, their schools, and their neighborhoods. This group of the 2018 cohort for Youth at City Council will execute a community action project towards the end of the semester to showcase their youth-driven advocacy project. I am excited to see the great things that they will accomplish as a member of the Youth at City Council's class of 2018. And the other program that we also have through Youth, Pro Youth and Families, is the Summer at City Hall, which is towards the summertime, and it is a four-week intensive program for youth to learn about local government and careers with local government, and how to advocate for, again, how to advocate for community change. About 10 to 20 participants will have a paid internship where they job shadow a city employee. And with that, I will let the students, one by one, stand up to introduce themselves and one issue that they are interested in learning more about.
Super. Thank you. And Marie has the microphone.
Hi, my name is Jackie Hernandez, and one issue I'm interested about right now is the big safety in our environment.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jackie. Ladies and gentlemen, hold the microphone up a little closer.
Hi, my name is Sierra Miller, and I am in 10th grade. And one issue that I'm interested in is the mental health care access in Rancho Cordova.
Super. Do us a favor and tell us what school you go to also.
Cordova High.
Okay.
They're all Cordova High students.
Oh, okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
I am Vivica Goodpastor, and I'm interested in learning more about the actions that we take to help the homeless in Rancho.
Good evening. My name is Tivika Kovalchuk, and I'm a junior at Cordova High School, and I'm interested in learning how our community informs, or how our city informs the community about different health issues, ranging from drug abuse and obesity to supporting residents that suffer various diseases such as heart diseases or cancers or whatever it may be, and possibly being involved in fundraising for, for them.
Hello, my name is Karina Filonyuk. I'm a junior at Cordova. And one issue I'm interested in is youth, how they should be more informed about how the budgeting directed towards them is distributed, and maybe have a greater say in that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cassandra. I'm a junior from Cordova High, and one issue I'm interested in is cyber safety education for youth.
Super.
Good evening. My name is Nick, and one issue I'm interested in learning about is enhancing the image of Rancho Cordova to make it a better place and attract new, new people that don't live here.
Good evening. My name is Rista Chauhan, and I'm interested about the proposed water rake hike.
My name is Diego Wilson, and I'm interested in helping the homeless, like, reintegrate into society and help them, like, get jobs and become more involved, I guess.
Hello, my name is Emily Marinova, and I am a 9th grader at Cordova. And one issue I'm interested in is promoting the image of Rancho Cordova.
Hello, my name is Karen Garcia. I'm a junior at Cordova High, and one issue I'm interested is the stray animals in our community and getting them homes or getting them a place where they can actually eat and be safe.
Good evening. My name is Trinity Foster, and I'm concerned about the health environment of the contaminations of our waters and how it goes into our food and our fish that we eat.
Good evening. My name is Elijah Joseph, and one issue I'm interested in is what resources are available for LGBT+ youth, specifically in the school setting, and how we can improve upon them. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robin Jennings, and I'm interested in learning about how poor mental health in students and youth is being dealt with.
Hi, my name is Max Vidic. I'm interested in learning about the city's budget and how everything gets distributed around and how they manage past, like, budget problems that we have.
Hello, my name's Diana, and I'm interested in learning more about, like, taxes and where it goes to and how you do them.
Hello, my name is Vladislav Yatsinski, and I'm currently, I'm currently attending Cordova High School as a junior, and what I'm interested in right now is the homeless, how they make it through the night, you know, how they get food, things like that.
Hello, my name is Teresa Kohler. I'm a 9th grader at Cordova High School. I pride myself in being an outspoken person, and one topic that I am very interested in is acts, is resources for LGBT youth, more specifically trans youth, as many of them are getting bullied. And that's all.
Hello, my name is Nikunj Kumar, and I'm a junior at Cordova. I'd like to learn how we can reduce traffic on Folsom Boulevard, because that's like a major street in Rancho, and so we could get to where we want faster.
Hello, my name is Andy Zhu. I am a junior at Cordova High, and my interest or my concern about the city is our, is the environment, how we're keeping our city clean and keeping the riverways clean.
Hello, I'm Zoe Gabay, and I'm a junior at Cordova High School. I want to learn more about feminism and women's rights, specifically what Rancho Cordova is doing to raise awareness and make more resources available to the youth.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Faver, and I'm interested in learning more about the role local businesses play in our local government and what the city council is doing to support them.
Wonderful. What a wide variety of, of issues. Some very strong themes that are topics of today, and some completely new ones that we have not typically heard here at City Hall anymore or before, so it's really great to meet you all. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Very impressive.
I feel very safe knowing that you guys are going to take over for us.
Super.
Also, when you find out all the answers to those things, let me know, okay?
Actually, Bob has a really good point. Whatever information you all uncover or good ideas that you have are absolutely welcome here. So I know you're going to stay for another hour or so, and then you'll probably come back at the end of the year, and we'll be looking forward to a report on all the great things that you've discovered and learned. Okay?
Mayor Budge, they have requested to take a picture with the council, if that's okay?
Wonderful. We'd be happy to. We have a photographer standing in the back of the room. Okay?
I love it. Clean and tidy carries the day.
Okay, our next presentation, Stacy Delaney. We have additional Community Enhancement Fund checks to present, and just a reminder to all of us that we will eternally thank the voters in Rancho Cordova for having approved this fund.
Yes, indeed. So, good evening, mayor, council members, staff and guests. My name is Stacy Delaney, and I'm the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city. This evening, we are presenting ceremonial checks to two groups, and these projects support local Rancho Cordova priorities, including children and youth, sports, the arts, and quality of life. So mayor and council members, once again, if you'll come down and join these groups as they receive their checks. The first check being presented this evening is for the Cordova Community Council Foundation to support the development and the oversight of the Cordova Youth Basketball League. The league was founded in 2017, and it's currently offering programs for boys and girls in grades five and six this February and March, as well as a program for high school boys and girls in the fall. The league is supervised by volunteer high school basketball coaches from Cordova High School in association with the Amateur Athletic League, with a focus on sportsmanship and player development. League games start February 10th, and Cordova High School Coach and League Program Director Fletcher Johnson and Coach Wendy Graff are accepting the check for $14,353. If you guys will go right over here. This is the last one. So the second check is for the Cordova Community Council Foundation to support the development and operation of the Mill Station Arts and Culture Center, now known as the MAC. The MAC is the newly renovated Mill Station Building that will become the hub of arts, history, and cultural experiences in Rancho Cordova. The MAC's ribbon cutting and grand opening happens on February 28th, and will feature the gallery exhibit Tapagami, which is the art of applying imagination to tape. This contemporary art form will be on display, and a free maker workshop will take place on March 3rd and 4th, as well as on March 10th and 11th at the MAC. Mill Station Coordinator and Artist Cheryl Gleason is accepting the check for $150,000. That concludes tonight's check presentation.
So anybody who is not familiar with Tapagami, be sure to come out for that, because you will be absolutely blown away, Garrett, at what the gentleman can do with tape.
Can't wait to see it. So many tapes and pictures.
Okay, we're going to call on Todd Humphrey to introduce a new city employee.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city staff, guests here tonight. I'm Todd Humphrey, the city's Facility Services Manager, and we've had a void for about six months now, but I'm happy to see that we're getting a chance to fill it after a long recruiting process involving our busy HR staff. We've been able to make a selection, and tonight I get to present to you our person fulfilling that role here tonight, Nick Enat. He's our new Facility Services worker. Nick?
Super.
Thank you, mayor, city staff, council members, everyone else in attendance tonight. Oh, all right. The future is now. Yeah, I'm, if there's one thing Todd's shown me, it's that we are high-tech.
We are high-tech.
I'm very grateful to be given the opportunity to work for, you know, the city that I now live in. I was in Woodland, California, working for the city of Davis, and yeah, it's, it's hard, it's hard to beat the three-minute commute now, so I'm very happy to be here.
Well, welcome, Nick. We're very pleased to have you on both regards.
Thank you very much.
And they found you the right shirt to wear.
Yes, they did. Got some more coming, but right now, this will do just fine.
Super. Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to have to call on the singing skills of everybody else on the, on the council, because we have a birthday to a coming up birthday.
I was going to say, I got a few more days.
Yes, a coming up birthday to celebrate. Is it a significant birthday?
No.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Okay, so.
I got, this is my last non-significant one before the significant one.
Oh, okay. All right. So you and Jack Benny.
That's right.
You don't, you don't remember Jack Benny?
Yeah, I know Jack Benny is.
Okay. All right.
I should have read a video story. Yeah, I watched.
So Thursday, the, the 8th, Councilmember Terry is going to have a lovely birthday. So, gentlemen, sing away.
Hit it. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Cha cha cha.
Happy birthday, dear Donald Terry, so old, so old. Happy birthday to you.
And many more.
Doesn't he look great for 52? Just the best. This is where I get to have the fun, to say, I, even with the appointment of Garrett, I am still the youngest council member on this council. Not by a lot, but I am. Can't tell.
Just not the newbie.
That's right. No longer the new councilman.
Okay, wonderful. Now, we're transitioning from presentations to public comment, and as I said before, we hope everyone who wants to speak has turned in a speaker card. Citizens wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time, and you must come up to the podium, and we'd be happy to have you take three minutes to tell us what is on your mind. And please just remember that under the government code, we can't take action, but we can certainly consider your issue, provide you a staff person to talk to, or schedule something on a future agenda if that's, if that's necessary. So Stacy, do we have any speaker cards?
I do. Walt Myers.
Walt, welcome.
My name's Walt Myers, live in Rancho. I recently submitted an application to the city for a position on the Enhancement Fund Oversight Committee. I have since been self-convinced that certain entities, not all of them, might be regarding this as an annual portion of their budget. I feel that these groups are closely connected with the city and the council historically. Since the Oversight Committee is prohibited from contributing, overriding, or negating any decision made by the council, I do not feel that I would have anything to contribute and might be a disruptive participant. Therefore, I would like to withdraw my application, and I thank you for any possible consideration that might have been. Thank you. Do you need this?
No, I do not.
No?
Um, well, it might not hurt.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Walt, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to council reports and start with Donald.
I'll start with last week, Thursday through Saturday, I attended the New Partners for Smart Growth Conference. It's a national conference that this year was held in San Francisco through the Air District. Many of my colleagues in the Air District attended, including my executive. Very impressive. It, it's, last year it was in Louisville, but it brings together about 1,000 elected leaders, city managers, planners, air advocates, housing advocates, all kinds of different folks. And, you know, my personal interest in, around housing, attending that, and they never had enough chairs in the room for the number of people that were interested in, in attending it, but some really fascinating conversations and presentations, some of them very similar to NLC, Lyft, and Airbnb did a session on the changing face of transportation and, and housing, and one interesting thing about Airbnb was 45% of their new businesses that signed up last year were seniors and women. And they've been able to show that a lot of this additional income has allowed single senior women to age in place in a way that just was not possible. And so even when you look at how disruptive it is in places like Lake Tahoe and San Francisco, and it's driving up rents, and it's making housing not available, it is allowing, there is definitely a benefit to a certain sector of their community, but to think that it, of any small business industry in the country to have nearly, to nearly be at a point where most of their growth are senior citizens and females is just mind-boggling to think that that's, that's where they are in this. And that's in, like, the last two years where their growth has been. So it, it was really fast, and the whole, the whole week was really great. If you have a chance to go to another one, I would really highly recommend to go. The one caveat to that is they may not have another one, because up until this year, they heavily relied on EPA funding, and EPA backed out of their six-figure sponsorship this year. And so a lot of their stuff around climate change and other things like that obviously is not in agreements with this, with this administration. Let me see. With that, I had a lot of traveling recently. Garrett and I, so this was since our last meeting, Garrett and I attended the, or Councilmember Gatewood and I, attended the book release for 916, Inc. this year, or at Mills Middle School, and again, very impressed for any of you who have been to one of these, and Wendy, you've attended one. This wasn't as kind of tear-jerker as the Teen Mothers Program was around Dia de los Muertos, but it was really interesting. Kids got up, read their poems, and even signed books for us and stuff, but it was, it was a lot of fun, you know? It really shows the kind of impact that a program like that is having, even on younger kids that aren't in the kind of transition and crisis that maybe the, the, the young ladies are at Walnut Wood, but still a very impactful day, or, or event to be at. There was one other thing I was going to... Oh, I was just, later on this week, and I'll just throw it out there in case anyone hasn't decided if they're attending, but they are holding the California Housing Crisis Conference. This is a statewide conference that they're holding in Sacramento on Thursday at the library, I believe, or 500, no, 914- at the library, I believe, or 500, no, 914 Capitol Mall. I believe that's, yeah, I believe that's the library building. But it's gonna bring together regional advocates, a lot of folks. You know, there's been a lot of talk right now about things like rent control and state funding, and what's gonna happen with federal funding around a lot of the sources that help us build things like Mather Veterans Village or Crossings and a lot of other things. For those of you who aren't aware, the federal government was this close to ending what's called the private equity bond markets. And what that is, it would essentially have killed the tax credits that we got from Mather Veterans Village. And it would not have moved forward. I think in the case of Mercy, they probably already sold those bonds. A lot of them were trying to rush before the end of the year. But that was how close, I mean, they were talking tax-exempt bonds for municipal bonds and a lot of other things. But this one in particular would have killed what are considered the 4% tax credits, which are the ones that house the very lowest-income community or individuals. And things like Veterans Village would never be possible without that kind of financing. And they still may look at that through the budget and other things. So, we still should be really vigilant about these projects that we really care about and trying to get them done. And lastly, I would just say that I am chairing the Community Resources Cap-to-Cap Committee again this year with the help of Simon and Company and Silvana over there. And we had our initial meeting to start writing our position papers. And anybody that's going to Cap-to-Cap that's interested, if you'd like to be on our team, let me know.
Super. Thank you. Garrett?
All right. So, as Donald said, I was at 916 Book, Inc. And so, I picked something because I think we should all hear about. There is 13 writers, three, six pieces each, and it's these kids that are going through times, and they're using English to help them out. So, it's part of Rancho, so I thought I'd read one. This is called "A Pet's Favorite Treasure." Dear my puppy leash, have you been tossed, chewed, buried, and burned, but still survived? It is amazing to think that you are one of the most useful tools in the whole house. Yet, you are also the most damaged. I have seen Sunny chew, play, hide-and-go-seek, accidentally throw you into a campfire, and somehow you're still sane. I thank you for making sure the oversized puppy does not go running off to Canada. Interesting. Through you, I do see Sunny tangled up. I suppose that is getting revenge. Sincerely, Alex. P.S. We're going on a long walk tomorrow, so I can mentally get ready. So, I thought that was cute. So, it was great. We got to see all these kids and their parents. And you could tell they're beaming with pride, and this is just something special that I think is really amazing that it all came because it was at a Cap-to-Cap meeting, and Donald met the people, and then the city got behind it and did the Measure H funds, and so I think it's amazing.
Just to clarify, it wasn't Cap-to-Cap. It was my American Leadership Forum class that Jim and I were both in. Yeah, but it's a fantastic...
Shout-out to American Leadership.
And Cyrus is in today's, in this year's class.
And we do appreciate Cap-to-Cap. All right. Next one. The trail was open. That was very cool. So, I got to shovel a bunch of really hard dirt and watch Linda almost kill everybody with a very large... See, you were not there. And we were very, and see...
That's not right.
And see, the thing was, she was driving it, and she took out someone's wallet. But it's all right because we'll put it back. It was pretty awesome.
Didn't need to come down anyway, or?
Yeah, it was pretty awesome. We got to go see the Metro Chamber, where Linda and I got to go eat dehydrated green beans or something. It was rough, but it was fun seeing all the growth that's happening in our city. It was terrible. We got to go to the, I always get to go to the Business Chamber breakfast, and I met four new businesses that had moved into Rancho Cordova and are super excited about everything that's going on. And they're all starting to get the word out, so it was exciting to see those guys. I saw the BIA dinner, and what I've learned is that all these dinners, most important thing is you don't eat anything except for the dessert, because that never misses. Everything else is dry and rough and why, and, ah, man, but that stuff. And then we got to do a really cool workshop, which hopefully someone will talk about, that we're talking about a potentially, I learned new words, civic center for the city of Rancho Cordova, and so that's very exciting for the future. That's it.
Thank you, Garrett. David?
So, Garrett, the words you were missing in your report were rubber chicken circuit.
Right.
Rubber chicken circuit. Yeah. I have a short report. I went to a whole bunch of meetings. I don't think any of them rise to the level I should report in detail on them. The Chamber Breakfast was a great event. I enjoyed that. The one thing that was really remarkable for me in the past couple of weeks was on Saturday, I was at Cordova High School at the gym in the morning, and I saw the start of Rancho Cordova Youth Basketball. And there were dozens of kids, probably 50 or 60, fifth and sixth graders showing up there for the start of a new sports league in Rancho Cordova, done in tremendous partnership with our school district. The coaches who were here earlier and receiving that check are the coordinators for that program. They've worked with RCA. It's been a year-long, almost year-long process to start this up. Starting a new league is incredibly hard work. But what happened on Saturday was not only the organization of it, the registration, all that sort of stuff, and the passing out of the jerseys, you know, Rancho Cordova Basketball on them. So, it was great, you know, photo moments there. But what we saw were varsity basketball players playing with these fifth and sixth graders, acting as their coaches. And it was really, I think, a remarkable setup that we've got here. And I'm really looking forward to how this league develops because eventually, we hope to have teams organized, or multiple teams organized, from every elementary school in Rancho Cordova, all playing together at Cordova High with students and athletes from Cordova High, so.
So, expand on the concept a little bit. It's fifth and sixth grade?
It's fifth and sixth graders, boys and girls, every Saturday between now and probably the end of March, or maybe a week into April.
So, how do people contact them to sign up?
If they looked online for the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association website, there's a link. They could also Google Rancho Cordova Youth Basketball and find it that way. But either way, Rancho Cordova Athletic Association or Rancho Cordova Youth Basketball, and you can find the signup information. That's all right. They're always welcome.
Great. Thank you. Bob?
Well, I went to the mosquito bed control board meeting. They, it's quite different than it was last year now. Everything is so dry. And they're able to maintain and grow their mosquito fish and everything like that. But it was such a dramatic change from the, almost a record set of rain we got last year. And this year, we're down to, I think, maybe a third of what we are expecting. So, if anybody knows any good rain dances, you can use them, okay? Because we would really need some more rain. In the sanitation district, they're doing very well on that. They even got slowed down some because of the difficulty getting labor and getting the concrete and getting some of the other things that are being used across the state. That is also something that I think is going to affect our Veterans Village growth because it is with, if you think about the fires in Northern California and Southern California, and what they're trying to do to replace some of the homes and the businesses and the floods now that, in Southern California. And there's, so there's more things that need to be done. And then, more than Northern California, you had to almost rebuild the dam, and that was taking out a lot more also. So, right now, we are hoping we can get the Phase Two of the Veterans Village as the inside of the two-story building begun. And then we can start on, in the summer, the Phase Three, begin the construction, gather 50 apartments. But it's getting kind of difficult because of the labor that is so short and the material that is so short. And so, we are gonna be bidding with a lot of people. So, we're gonna have to see what we come up with on the actually cost of doing that work on the Veterans Village. When it's done, it's gonna be fantastic. But getting it there right now, knock on wood, we've got the money that we needed, the tax credit that Donald was talking about, the $13 million in tax credits, $2 million from the state fund that we got, and then a million dollars that the county put into it when they sold 17 acres of property to the VA. That $1 million is also coming from that sale to finish the money they needed for the Veterans Village. Now, we'll have to watch and make sure that we have the money we still need if the bidding goes up higher than we think it's going to. So, keep your fingers crossed on that. But really, I'm looking forward to getting that last part of Veterans Village done.
Okay, thank you. So, the routine meetings that I attended were the Regional Transit and the Library and the Rail Card or JPA, which David and I attended this morning. The fun thing about the JPA is it gave us an opportunity to talk about the groundbreaking for the rails to trails. And we got a promise of some glamorous equipment to come and help us cut the ribbon when the new trail is open in the fall. I attended the State of the Downtown Sacramento Breakfast and went specifically to hear a gentleman who's one of my favorite speakers. His name is Tom Murphy, and he was the mayor in Pittsburgh who reclaimed the city of Pittsburgh and its river back in 1994 to 2000. And the ULI, the Urban Land Institute, has put out a new book called Intentionality: How Cities Compete in the 21st Century. And the point of this book is that don't just drift along. Make your choices about how you want your city to grow and where you want it to grow. If you don't invest in your city, you will not have the city you want. And the pieces of the puzzle, the tools that you need to develop in order to think intentionally, ours to think strategically, to develop dynamic leadership, to mine the talent you have in your city, and to focus on place-making and design. Pay attention to what you built. I also attended the wonderful artist reception for the new exhibit that we have out in the hall. And all of our visitors here tonight, be sure you go and take a look at it. This particular exhibit is called Patterns. And the artists are a wide range of ages. I believe that the youngest artist out there is eight years old, and they go on up from there. And we had entertainment by an incredibly special duo from the River City Concert Band or Orchestra. These are two young men who played the keyboard and the saxophone, I think. Ooh, I'm forgetting. I think it was a saxophone. They, no, no, it was, it was a clarinet. They played the keyboard and the clarinet. They were incredible. In a couple of months, they are going to play in a competition at Carnegie Hall in New York. So, we will be celebrating them here at city council in a few weeks. Yes, we attended the Metro Chambers Dinner, and it truly was a low point in food at the Hyatt Regency Downtown. It was really sad.
Yeah, I was, I'm not feeling nearly as bad that I ended up missing it at the last minute.
No, no, I'm sorry. That was not, Garrett's right. Start with the dessert, stay with the dessert. And if you're lucky, the salad is your main course.
So, students, just so you know, in five years on the city council, we've never talked about food at a dinner like this.
This was really unusual, so we feel sorry for the venue right now. Yes, most of us attended the Chambers Economic Development Forum, Economic Forum, for a kind of a state of the economy, and it was absolutely fascinating. Gentlemen came and presented the state of the economy, local, state, and national and worldwide. But the really fascinating part, Donald Traxwell thought you were talking about at the Partners for Smart Growth, had a wonderful gentleman from a re, a commercial real estate broker who came and talked about demographics and demographic shifts and changes. And instead of talking about the basic categories that we have been using, millennials, boomers, whatnot, he divided everybody into 10-year periods. And those, dividing it into a 10-year period helps to refine the demographics and really is more educational about the way in which we look at people's lifestyle trends or housing trends or whatever. And the statistic about Airbnb being a significant number of seniors and female, single house, single elderly people, is also true of people renting rooms. There is a huge economy in people renting rooms in their houses. And it absolutely does exactly what you said. It helps older people stay in their houses because it's a source of income. And maybe you'll get some help painting the exterior and mowing the grass also.
And keeping my Airbnb is down to rooms. So, I mean, there are literally people that are taking a three-bedroom house and renting two of them on a temporary basis.
Yeah, but the most interesting part was really the talk about the women and how they've now taken over the market, and what are they gonna do, and how Rancho is just uniquely set for that group because we have the condos, and if they don't want to have the yard, but they want to still have the space. And actually, and you happen to be upper management and staying in business longer, you know, you have to look for that in the city because you still want the kind of wholesome feel without being downtown if you're in, and I just, I was like, oh, it's Rancho. Perfect.
It is. It really is. You're 100% correct. So, we took all that information into the visioning session that our city manager set up for us last week, and we will be following up on that. And on the bright note, in the food world, and there must have been an awful lot going on at Cordova High on Saturday because I participated in judging a culinary competition. This is the, it's what's now called FCCLA. It used to be Future Homemakers of America, but it's now titled Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. And I specifically was asked to help judge the salads. People are, people are competing in a, there probably were eight or 10 different categories of competition. Did anybody here participate in that? Okay, because there were speeches, there were all sorts of things. But I participated in judging the salad preparation, which is something I enjoy. And finally, I would ask that we adjourn this memory, adjourn this meeting in memory of a gentleman that Rancho Cordova and the region lost a few weeks ago. His name is Jack Seibert, and he was a longtime board member at the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. Wonderful local, past president, yes, wonderful local businessman. Jack passed away, and everybody misses him. So, I would ask that we adjourn in Jack's memory.
One of the funniest people you could spend time with at someplace like a chamber event. Wonderful guy.
Retreats. Retreats were always entertaining with Jack. So, we'll turn it over to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to take this opportunity and thank the council for your participation and the great discussion we had at the vision, at the session that we had last week. The visioning session is held periodically to talk about the future vision of the city. And what we ask, that we bring the highest level of thinking about what we want for the community. One of the directions that the city council provided to staff is the concept of pursuing a civic center. So, for the coming months, we will be talking about this quite a bit. Part of it is deciding what civic center is, what it looks like, where it's located, what does it include, and many, many questions like this. So, it's very exciting, and staff is looking forward to bringing back some information to the council. And the only other item that I wanted to add, I had the opportunity to attend the California League of Cities, City Departments, City Managers Meeting. And great discussions, and it's what I find very useful about these meetings, the range of issues and the similarity of the issues that we all deal with throughout the state. Some of the items are very common issues that we see, seems to be, the homelessness issue is a big, major issue throughout the state. Infrastructure and the funding and the financing that's needed to make that happen. Recruitment with the improving economy, we're seeing a major challenge in recruiting and maintaining talent throughout different organizations. And one of the other things that fortunately is not a problem for us is the issue of the pensions and the unfunded liabilities that many, many organizations face that may in fact drive some of them to bankruptcy. So, it's really a great feeling for us to be sitting here and say that we can write a check... a check for our unfunded liabilities today if we had to. So that's all my report. Thank you.
So I know that all of our students will be learning more about that, but that for those of you who talked about budgeting and taxes, that really is an important concept, the fact that the city of Rancho Cordova has had a balanced budget ever since we incorporated in 2002. So we will move into our consent calendar items. They are deemed routine unless a member of the public wants to speak to an item or one of the City Council members has something to pull. We can consider items 9.1 through 9.3 in a single motion.
Can we pull 9.3, please?
Okay. So do we have a motion on the other two?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Stacy, will you call the roll, please?
Sure. Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes. Thank you. Stacy, you want to read item 9.3 into the record?
Item 9.3, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Contract Amendment 10-2013-2 with Roche Landscape Services to Increase the Contract Amount From $1,637,600 to a Not-To-Exceed Amount of $2,107,600. And Extend the Contract Term From March 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 for Landscape Maintenance Services.
Super. Thank you. And I noticed we have city staff. Steve, you want to come up?
Is there a question? I think that's maybe...
I don't know. So, okay. Garrett?
So increasing $500,000 is quite a bit. Plus, we didn't take it out to bid and give the other businesses that happen to be in our city a chance. So why would we want to do that?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Budge, members of the council. For the record, I'm Steve Harriman with the Department of Public Works. So it is a somewhat normal practice that we amend our maintenance contracts once or twice. This would be the second amendment to this contract. We are extending it through June 30 of 2019, so the contract schedule goes consistent with the fiscal year. And we will be putting this contract out to bid next spring. So in the spring of 2019, we will be going out to bid for this, and we'll be bringing a contract for your consideration prior to July 1 of 19.
Is it normal for us to go $500,000 and just extend?
Steve Cyrus?
So this is the structure of the on-call contract that we have executed is to provide for ongoing operational maintenance. So the initial, the base amount of the contract was bid competitively, so we have a base amount that we're working with. So the increase that you're seeing is not increase in scope or the amount of work that we do. It's the extension of time. So this is extending the same term of the contract for an additional... Is it 15 months or 18 months?
16 months.
16 months. So that's consistent with the amount and the initial bid that we had received. And also, just another addition, the landscaping contractor is... Happens to be a local contractor in this case.
Yeah, they're in Sacramento. I'm not going to...
They're in the county.
My biggest thing is I keep on seeing contracts come up here, and they keep on going up. And I'm starting to get concerned because we're so fiscally conservative as a group and watching our dollars and cents and the contracts. I haven't yet seen a contract come up here and go down. And so I just want to make sure we're aware that, I mean, like $600,000 is a huge amount in even to push a contract to a term. So I want... I just, I'm starting to get a little nervous because every time I come up here, the contract goes up by 400 to 500,000.
I think it's important to point out that if the contract was going down and there were savings, it wouldn't need to come to us.
I would love to see one, just one.
Yeah, but they... Nobody needs to vote then.
I know.
But I really want to emphasize, this is not an increase. This is an extension of time.
Was it more because why do we have to extend it? We just couldn't make it work, or it fell on the wrong fiscal term? I don't understand. It just...
It would have expired.
It was too hard to put a bid together and throw it out, more like?
I think it's an expensive process.
Very.
So, but I'm sure that Steve and Albert would be happy to meet with you and talk about the whole process.
I would love that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Super. All right. Great. Thank you. So do we need a motion on 9.3?
I'll move the item.
One second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes. Thank you. We will move into consent public hearing items. And again, we will be opening the public hearing and voting on this unless somebody wants to pull it from the consent calendar and discuss this item or we have any input from the public.
I have no public speaker cards.
Okay. So colleagues, is anybody interested in discussing item 10.1? All right, we're going to open the public hearing. Acknowledge that there is no public input. Close the public hearing.
Move the item.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes. Thank you very much. Item carries. We have no public hearing items, but we have three regular calendar items. So Stacy, if you want to read 12.1, and we will call on city staff.
Item 12.1, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Contract Number 8-2018 with Bennett Engineering Services, Inc., in an Amount Not-To-Exceed $130,140 for Engineering and Design Services for the Cordova Park Safe Routes to School Project.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Budge and council members. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. The city is fresh off of the success of completing a significant sidewalk project around Rancho Cordova Elementary. And we're very pleased to announce that the city has successfully obtained another grant to do a similar project on the west side of Coloma Road. And to give us more information about that project and the grant that we received, I'd like to introduce Chris Boyer.
Thanks, Albert. Thank you, Mayor Budge, and council members and city staff for this opportunity to bring this exciting project to you guys today. Some of our goals today is that we want to update you on the proposed pedestrian connections that we have and improvements, as well as we're looking to authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Bennett Engineering Services. So right now, we have... We're looking at the Cordova Park neighborhood and UC City Hall and some of the major roads where Folsom Boulevard and Coloma, Chase Drive and Zinfield Drive all kind of intersect in this area. And you notice there's a lot of gaps that are in those locations. Some of the points to notice, though, is the local schools, how many local schools we have in this area, the local businesses that are in this area, the train stations, RT train station hubs where they're located, as well as... Also, with all these locations, we have these connections that are missing. And so you can see some of the existing conditions with this. You can see the kids and the students that are walking in the streets. Some of the areas are not as safe as they could be, and so we're looking at some improvements that we're trying to do in this area. Here's some of the other locations along Coloma where a lot of the high school students and middle school students walk every day. So one of the things we're looking to do, or we've done recently, as Albert mentioned, is we've done the Rancho Cordova Elementary Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project around the Rancho Cordova Elementary School site. And that was about a 1.7-mile improvement of sidewalk. What we're trying to do with this project is improve these areas as, like we see in these photos, the curb ramps, the sidewalks. But in the Cordova Park neighborhood, along Dulcetto Drive, Ellenbrook Drive, and Malaga Way, and then also the Coloma Frontage Road, currently, there's existing connections at those points, and so that's why they're going to those. So it'll create these connections that we're looking for. Some of the parts that we're trying to do is improve the safety of the neighborhood. We think the sidewalk adds a huge safety factor to it. Also, the enhancement to the community is a major part of this, of sidewalks, frontage, just the overall look and feel of the neighborhood just really accentuates with the sidewalks. And it promotes the healthy living. Really, we want to get people out and about, and what better way to do it than by getting the sidewalk in there, walking to places rather than driving all the time? Creating these safer connections helps with that. And then finally, those connections that we talked about. We look at these different locations where we want to get people to and from, the residents. We're trying to do that, not only the students to the schools, but residents to the businesses and to the RT stations. More walkability, friendlier, nicer. So what we're looking at right now, we were fortunate, we were able to receive 1.575 million in state active transportation funds. That was through the SB 1 augmentation that was given out, and so we're fortunate to receive that money for a three... Or just under $3 million project, 2.95 million project for this, where we as a city will be putting in $1.3 million in local funds. So with that, our next steps, we're looking to begin design upon approval from the council. We want to look into complete design in a fast pace in April of 2018 and begin construction this fall because of that augmented money that we have. We're fortunate, but we have to go quickly, and so that's the idea behind this. So we're asking that the... We're recommending the council to authorize the city manager to execute the contract number 8-2018 with Bennett Engineering Services Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $161,700 for the engineering and design services for the Cordova Park Safe Routes to School Project. And ask if you have any questions.
Okay. Questions for staff? Bob?
Yes, if you go back one or two of those... There we go. Looking at Coloma Road and that one area, it's red down in there. Right in there. This is the area that's kind of behind the big wishes alongside.
Yes.
And there's a couple of properties in there that have some self-made sidewalks, but there's a lot of them that don't have any sidewalks in it. Is that something that you've already gone through? You're going to go through all the property owners, say we're going to put in sidewalks there?
Yes, that's correct. If those are those sidewalks that are already there are kind of like to grade and they won't quite work ADA-wise, we'll probably have to remove those and put in new sidewalk. We've accounted for to put in all new in those areas, so...
It'll be similar to what they did on Zinfandel, then. No sidewalk there, but they... When they put in the sidewalks and had to do something with the driveways also, and so it's all something that's part of this contract we're talking about, correct?
That's correct, yeah. And this is at the very, very beginning of it. We just received approval a few days ago from the California Transportation Commission to move forward with this project. So this is... We were bringing this too early on, so you can kind of get a good flavor of exactly what we're looking to do.
Well, I know it's going to be helpful to have the safe way to go on that road because there are a lot of kids from Cordova High School that use that road, but they're in the streets. Kind of makes me think about when we finally put in that sidewalk on Folsom Boulevard for the kids going into Kenny High School. I mean, it was scary to have kids walking in the gravel about this far from the cars going by, you know? And right now, you have it pretty tight on that street, so having some sidewalks, at least a little bit safer for everybody to walk there. Thank you.
Donald?
And we're talking full ADA and the driveways are going to be sloped, or are we just doing rolled curb, or what does it tend to look like?
Yeah, the curb and gutter are... The curb and gutters existing for the most part in those areas, and so we're going to be going up to that, but we will have to modify some of the driveways. That's typical for that because of ADA purposes. They don't always have to go... It was not a replacement of all, the entirety of it, but most times it's a portion of this.
And are we looking at any of the... I don't even know what you would call them. The stuff that we did at AM Wind, the blocks that basically, the sidewalks and stuff, the raised... It wasn't sidewalk, but like the bumpouts that they did, are any of those... Are we doing additional crosswalk improvements as we do this, too?
Yeah. On the Coloma Frontage and Dulcetto, we are doing some crosswalk improvements there. It's a very wide open area over there, so we're trying to narrow that down. There are some features where it'll slow down some of the traffic through that area as well. But that's the main idea, is how do we create a safer crossing at that point? That's one of the major ones, as well as we're looking at making things more visible down at the Malaga intersection, Coloma intersection, and making things more visible for students or residents to cross there, and so they're...
Like even the lighted dots that are down there, the reflectors that light up and stuff like that seem to be really effective. And I know there's way more traffic there than what you're dealing with at AM Wind, but I mean, God, at some point, I wish we could just get a hold of a chunk of their field and straight get Coloma to a point where it is a right turn, not that slope anymore. But I know that's maybe a pipe dream, but...
We do have more improvements coming to help over there. We're able to... It's for the plaza, for that location over there, so that is another project that's coming down the pipeline, but this is one of the ones that we're just starting in on.
Well, this is a good step. This is definitely... If I was making a list of around here where we'd want to start, this is a good start. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
So I have a question. I'd like to ask a little more information about the funding, simply because on the internet, there have been some questions about what we said about the funding for the Rails to Trails project. So I just want to make sure that we all know what we're talking about here. So the State Active Transportation Program Fund is the one that was just approved by the CTC and is... The source is Proposition 1B or whatever that was? Is that accurate?
Correct. This is... We received funds through augmentation through Senate Bill 1. That's correct.
And so when we talk about city transportation funds or local funds, is that general fund or is it Measure A or Measure H or what?
In this case, we're using the Measure A funds and...
A as in apple?
Yes.
From STA?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where the majority of the funds are coming from.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Super. So this is our own local Safe Routes to School project. It has... Does not have funding from the Safe Routes to School Funding Organization?
No. It's the Active Transportation portion of it. It's a different funding source. They kind of combined a lot of those into the Active Transportation Program, and that's fairly recent, over the last few years. Made the Rails Trails was the first round of that, the funding. This is from the third round.
Okay. Super. All right. Then we will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody else in the public who signed up or would like to speak to the item.
I do not have any public speaker cards for this item.
Okey-dokey. Then we'll close the public hearing and see if we're ready for a motion.
I'll move the item.
Sir Second?
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Item carries. Did you read it in? I'm sorry. I should have asked you to do that.
Item number 12.2, Discussion and Direction Regarding Bingo Game and Bingo Parlors.
Okay. Hi there.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, Darcy Clark with the Planning Department.
Try your mic.
Is that better?
Better? Better.
Good evening, Darcy Clark with the Planning Department, and with me this evening, I have Jeff Sheldorf with the... And with me this evening, I have Jeff Sheldonorf with the, um, Police Department. And so this is a joint effort between our departments as well as the City Attorney's, um, Office. And we will continue our presentation here. So before you this evening is to discuss, um, whether or not bingo parlors, bingo gaming should be allowed as a primary use within the city. So some of our goals for this evening would be first, um, whether or not to continue prohibiting bingo parlors or allow them as a primary use. If the direction is to prohibit them, staff would suggest repealing Chapter 14.28, which addresses bingo parlors. It wouldn't be necessary to have that in the municipal code. The second item we'll be discussing is, um, if the council does direct staff to make some changes because they want to allow bingo parlors as a primary use, um, we would need to make some appropriate amendments to the code. So Chapter 4.28, which is bingo parlors, would need to be, um, reviewed for any inconsistencies and updated for current state law. Chapter 4.26, which talks about bingo games, um, that would need to be reviewed as well for consistency with state law. Um, and then staff would also suggest if the direction is to allow these as a primary use, we would need to make some amendments to the zoning code in Title 23, um, to address where these particular uses would be allowed in the land use table. Just at a high level in terms of bingo gaming, um, it is heavily regulated by the state. Cities can enact their own ordinances for bingo game operations. Um, currently, these are conducted by nonprofits. So mobile home parks, churches, schools, anything that's a charitable group, um, can operate a bingo game. The maximum prize payout is $500 per game. Um, salaries and wages cannot be paid from bingo game proceeds. Um, the only exception to that is for security guards. Um, and the games must be operated by members of the organization that are operate to, that are authorized to operate a game. So currently in the city, what is prohibited? Um, bingo gaming and bingo parlors as a primary use is prohibited. However, um, as an ancillary or incidental use, they are allowed if they obtain a special business license. So the city currently has four special business licenses for what we call these nonprofit organizations, um, churches, schools, the Moose Lodge, the Elks Lodge, those types of organizations.
That's a clarifying question. So you're saying right now, there's some, the Moose Lodge can do it once a month? But it's not the primary use of their.
Every Friday.
So once a week, but the primary use of the Moose Lodge is not to do bingo?
Correct.
Okay.
Same with the Elks.
So what is currently allowed, which is what I just hit on, which is these bingo games as an incidental use? So they have to obtain a special business license. They're required to adhere to all the requirements in there. Our code has a maximum payout of $250 per game. And the state, like I said, is a $500 per game. Um, in terms of the bingo session, is it cannot exceed six hours in duration and they're allowed to have one bingo game per week? So bingo parlors as a primary use, um, if that is the direction of the, of the council, is that, um, currently as the code stands, they would have to obtain a special business license. This goes through finance and, um, the Police Department. There's various compliance and inspection sections. It would have to be renewed on a yearly basis. Um, it could be approved, conditionally approved or denied based upon review and findings. Um, and as I said, there isn't annual review, there, there's a background check process that they have to go through. At this point, I'm going to turn it over, um, to my colleague to discuss, um, just an oversight generally of how Sacramento County handles their bingo parlor operations.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, my name is Lieutenant Jeff Sheldonorf with the, uh, Police Department. Uh, my purpose here tonight is to give you a law enforcement perspective in your consideration for, um, changing or staying with the current, the code that you have. Um, a little bit of background about myself, I spent four years in the Special Investigations Bureau, the Sacramento Sheriff's Department, and one of the goals there was, or one of the missions there was to, um, have oversight and, um, enforcement on bingo parlors within the Sacramento County. Um, so tonight I want to address two different things to consider. Um, one is the enforcement aspect and the other is oversight. Um, in my experience in the county, um, with the enforcement side, and, and again, I want to preempt this and say that not all bingo parlors are, are this way, but there are this, the potential for it to be here, be, go this direction. Um, some of the things to consider, um, uh, in, in, in my experience, it has been, um, illegal games, um, within the parlors. Um, that includes, um, over max payouts, uh, on games, bingo machines that can be fixed. Um, uh, I've, I've run across slot machines, um, as you well know, it's a cash business, so there, there is a, uh, an issue with embezzlement and, and that sort of thing. Um, there, on the oversight side, um, we would obviously, the city would need staff and the PD would need staff to, um, maintain the oversight for these particular businesses. And, um, that's up to and including going in, doing, um, financial fiscal audits on, on the cash received and as well as, um, undercover operations potentially, if there's a longer term investigation. If we did see any sort of embezzlement or something like that, um, that is a pretty significant in, uh, investigation, um, a very long-term one when you're talking about financial crimes, um, that would certainly drain on the Police Department's resources, uh, investigation wise. Um, and then on the city side, you would also have to consider the, the cash audits, um, yearly and if there were any complaints, um, regarding that. So, um, with that, um, I, I would be open to any questions about my experiences in the past.
So the one that I know of that is closest is at the Mayhew Tech Center. So would you discuss the department's experience with that one?
Which one is that? I'm sorry.
I don't know what the name of it is, but it opened about, it opened in the early eighties or the mid eighties. Um, Mayhew Tech Center is the triangle with the black glass buildings, um, at the southwest corner of Mayhew and Folsom Boulevard.
In my, in, in my experience in the Investigation Bureau that I was in, I, I didn't have any experience with that one.
That one, yeah, it, it's over there, it's where National University used to be. It's, um, it's across Mayhew from, uh, the franchise tax board.
Yeah.
Yeah, in my experience, I, I personally didn't have any experience with that one.
In your experience though, in dealing, because obviously there's multiple bingo parlors in the incorporated county.
Yes, sir.
Um, have you, so i- is it, is it a normal issue to, I mean, uh, in a given year, do, are, are you investigating a couple of these or?
I wouldn't say was a normal, um, issue. We did have one major one where there was a half a million dollar embezzlement that we had to investigate. Um, I, as, as far, as, as far as a day-to-day investigations, no, but, uh, I'm, I'm just merely saying the potential is there and I've had experience with them. Um, they are, they are not frequent. And again, um, like I said, when I opened, I, certainly not all charities have this type of problem, but there is a potential for that.
But in general, the experience is pretty benign.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and if, I, I guess I want to understand this, because obviously from a regulatory standpoint, like let, let's set aside the, the crime issue side of that, because I think, I don't think we would assume going in that we would have that. But from a regulatory standpoint, the Sheriff's Department and the DA have the bandwidth, if we, if we chose to do this and we needed the additional staff support, that the expertise and experience to, to regulate these exists within the Sheriff's Department through our contract and through the DA's office? With, with some additional expense, obviously.
And we, and without talking to the, the city attorney, I, I think it would be incumbent upon the Chief of Police here to regulate the licensing and the revocation. So I don't know that we could dip into the county, um, certainly with the experience we could, but, um, the staffing would be an issue.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Garrett?
Yeah, um, can, can we ask a question of, of economic development?
Uh, sure, economic development.
And Linda, I had a follow-up question.
Kurt, do you know of any bingo parlor that wants to come in and start being in the city?
Um, thank you, Mayor Budge, members of council, Kurt Haven, Director of Economic Development. We've had discussions with one bingo parlor, there's possibly another one that's coming in. And, um, our only, I mean, we would welcome, but only concern is location. Um, they tend to pick areas where there's warehouses on lower rent. And typically when we do public gatherings in those areas, parking is always an issue or how, how it affects the tenants next door, the tenants next to it. But there's opportunity in Rancho Cordova and we would be, um, very open to work with anybody who's interested.
Wouldn't you see this use as more of a flex space like Claim Stake or some of the other ones that are populating an industrial space in the evening when there's not people there anyways?
That can happen, um, but, you know, we also have seen cases where even Claim Stake impacts their neighbors.
That's true.
Yeah.
So, um, you have to be selective. Um, during the recession, we had lots of opportunities in commercial areas. You know, a lot of different uses maybe were put in there that now we don't want because they are impacting their neighbors. Um, so I, I feel strongly that we will find a location for, you know, one or two, whatever you choose to do, if you choose to do this in Rancho Cordova. It's just a matter of, uh, spending some time and looking at locations. So we're in support of it.
Okay.
Yes.
So I have a historical question. Thank you, Kurt. Um, was this, so I hadn't actually seen this, this, um, wording, but now I'm realizing this is not part of the Folsom specific plan, so this isn't part of the seven or whatever businesses that aren't allowed anywhere. This is citywide though, right?
Right, but it's citywide, not just the Folsom Boulevard specific plan.
Right, so I, I think I heard some of the history of where this ordinance came from, but I was wondering if any of the co, my colleagues that passed it, why we chose to do this, like why this business was pointed out as.
I couldn't have told you it was in there.
Really?
Seriously.
So, and literally I assumed this was like no liquor stores, no tattoo parlors on Folsom Boulevard. I thought this was one of them.
See, we don't remember that, that this was in there.
The odd part of it is, we had actually had various informal discussions independently, uh, with large nonprofits in Rancho Cordova about this topic probably 10 years ago. I, I don't exactly know. There was the thought that this could be a revenue source to support, fill in the blank, you know, whatever, whatever it was.
Organization, yeah.
Yeah. That, and I didn't think we had a problem at that point with, with the site.
I was, I was really curious. My, and, and again, my naivete was when I was approached by an operator who's, may or may not be sitting in the audience right now. Um, and I remembered hearing that, I remember hearing that this was part of it, but I assumed it was the Folsom specific plan, which seemed to be very specific as to where it came from, what the concerns were and kind of what was there. And how, one of them I don't necessarily agree with, but, um, we kind of talked about that and I moved on. But the bingo parlor, I just assumed was a part of that. So it's really fascinating that, that this, what this, this didn't come from anything specific. So, I mean, to me, you know, if, if we have good operators that are willing to do this and it's going to attract people that may end up, you know, buying a sandwich in our town in the evening, because lord knows we need more people in this city after five o'clock.
Yes.
Um, so to, to me, it seems like a really logical step to take and maybe start with one or two and see how that goes. And if we do end up having this massive regulatory cost, then we can, we can go back and revisit it, but.
So address the Fols, to address the Folsom Boulevard specific plan? We had a lot of concerns about remodeling specific aspects of the Boulevard, specifically getting away from the leftover zonings and land uses that, um, are inherent with having highway. Okay, so that was really more of a focus. Um, and, and then of course, making sure that people really are doing something that, that's desirable, not, that doesn't cause, cause other social problems. But, but that's, I think that's why the three of us, I mean, we were more focused on getting rid of places where you could open a gas station or something.
No, I know, but I mean, the, the logic behind that list, I, I get. I may not agree with every single one of them, there's ones I, I put on that list that aren't on there. This one just seemed to befuddle me. And now to see it and realize it has, it's not part of that is kind of interesting. And I think more, uh, more supportive of my position, which is that I think, I think this is something that, you know, we, we've had a couple of, I think, very reputable operators that are operating in the county and in the city of Sacramento that would like to be here. Um, and, you know, they cater to certain communities that we've, we've, you look at KP International, other things like that, that were already attracting those types of unique business and diverse businesses. And this would, for one of them at least, it would bring, it would bring that demographic here even more.
So tonight, the, the, um, the initial question is, do we want to do this and modify the, the, um, the zoning code? So in that context, we're going to open the public hearing and see if other people have come to speak to this item and then we'll discuss that issue because that will, um, help Darcy focus on the rest of the discussion. Okay?
Mayor Budge, I just have a couple more slides to wrap up.
Sure.
For consideration. Um, a few more points to, to just consider, um, is that the city may not require that the charitable proceeds from any bingo game only go to Rancho Cordova charities. Um, a few other things is that, um, the city may charge an application fee for this and it may pose some additional fees to cover actual law enforcement, um, and public safety costs incurred.
Go back.
Point, point number one there is pretty problematic for me. So in other words, we would be introducing competition into Rancho Cordova, damaging existing charities here who are running the lower level bingo games and taking those profits away from those charities potentially and shipping them out of town. That's a problem. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, but that, that one gives me pause.
So, um, keep going, let's finish the slides.
And then these are just a few, um, land use consideration regulations. If the council wishes to, um, permit this, is that you could limit it to a specific zone or zones within the city. You could limit the number of bingo parlors, um, to start with. You could require distance separations, you could require a buffer between sensitive uses, um, and you could also impose some additional measures for security and safety. And then just to wrap up, these are the various discussion items.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll open the public hearing and ask if we have speaker cards.
I have one speaker card for this item, Jim Tabucci, if you'd like to come forward.
And you're welcome to put that thing down.
We'd be glad to do that.
I'm having trouble seeing over it.
How was that?
Much better.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Jim Tabucci. I'm the volunteer executive director for the Sacramento Mandarin's. Uh, we are 55 years old as of next month, so we're celebrating our 55th anniversary. Our whole mission is to transform the lives of youth through musical performance. Uh, we currently operate a bingo operation in Mayhew. It's the one over on Mayhew and, um, and Folsom. Uh, and we've been doing that for 30 years continuously now, uh, without incident, in fact. Um, we are also very present within, uh, the Rancho Cordova city. Uh, and in fact, uh, if you were at the Capital Air Show, you probably saw our drum line that was, uh, throughout the tarmac there. Um, we have, uh, two elementary school band programs that are operating within Rancho Cordova, both at Sunrise Elementary and at McGarvey Elementary. And so really pleased to see that. Um, in addition, if you were in the parade for Fourth of July, undoubtedly you heard our performance right behind you in the cars. Uh, and, and we were pleased to be part of that parade last year. Um, so we are part of the community, um, addressing one of the concerns, which is that a bingo parlor could come in, uh, and bring, uh, money outside of the community. Um, as I mentioned, we've been operating as, uh, a bingo parlor for 30 years. And in fact, we look at our, we looked at our numbers and 53% of the players that come to our bingo hall are residents of Rancho Cordova. And so, uh, we, we've had a visit, um, both from our, the city manager and economic development out to our site. And I think, uh, they were pleased to see that, uh, the bingo parlor does not look like a card room or a casino. It really looks more like a senior center, right? Um, uh, with, um, you know, it kind of looks like Cheers or something like that, where everybody comes in and it's a social hall. Um, we're preparing to extend our organization out from 55 years and we'd like to s, to set up in a place where we can then celebrate our 100th anniversary. We want to plant roots within a community. So we've been paying a lease that's very expensive. We would actually like to purchase a property in the place that we, we would like to call home. Our vision is to call this the Mandarin Center. And the center would not only be a place where we can conduct bingo, but we can teach classes, we can have private lessons that are there, we can hold, uh, band con- We can have private lessons that are there. We can hold band concerts and so forth there in a small scale. In looking at the bingo ordinance, the most important part that I've seen in the ordinance today is a.
Please bring your comments to a close.
Thank you. It is a phrase that says, "If all licenses were efficient and reputable, regulatory supervision would be almost perfunctory." Okay? And I also wanted to bring in some very quick news about what's happened within Sacramento County. So I believe since you've been there, actually on December 12th, the county board of supervisors met and unanimously they decided to eliminate the 2% fee that was taxed on these charities. That has resulted in, we perceive that as the elimination now of the bingo compliance unit. And so Sacramento County is looking at this as, as the city of Rancho Cordova did in their words, which is that regulation would be perfunctory.
So describe the 2% fee.
Yes, so the California ordinance allows for a fee to cover enforcement of the ordinance. And so Sacramento County had imposed the 2% of the payouts, and that was a fee on the nonprofits. And that is the only place in the state of California where such exorbitant fees were. And so the board of supervisors there said, "We feel that the dollars would be better put in the hands of the nonprofits who are doing their program work than in the hands of enforcement, where there's actually very little that's being done there today." And so that has resulted in the reduction of that 2%. It is only a business license that will be required going forward. And in fact, that has resulted in the bingo compliance unit as part of the sheriff's office, which we believe is disbanded at this point. We make calls there and none of them are returned. Yes. As far as.
Further questions for the speaker? Any other questions for the speaker?
Just a general question.
Yes.
So when you talk about establishing a community center and teaching classes, what sort of classes?
They would be instrumental band programs.
Okay.
And so, for example, today we offer those up at Sunrise Elementary and McGarvey Elementary Schools. We think that there would be need for homeschooling. Kids who are homeschooled who would like to take advantage of music classes. Also, private lessons would be offered there, so we'd have private instruction rooms that would be available. And that's typically for community elementary school through high school musicians.
So, you know, I had a conversation with the band director at Cordova High School.
Yes.
And my challenge to him was, "Tell me what you need in order to double the size of your band." Right? I like asking those sort of open-ended questions, get people to think big. And the answer he immediately came back with was, "There's a problem at our middle schools." So you get all these students in elementary studying music, they get to middle school, and it just declines by 80%. And I asked him, "What's the barrier there?" And he said, "I'm not sure. It might be structural, but also I know there aren't enough opportunities for kids to learn and continue to learn music in middle school."
That's correct.
That's a community gap I'm working on right now.
Yes, and I'd be willing to work with you on that.
What can you deliver on that front?
So actually, within Cordova High School, the marching band there is supported by the Mandarin's. And in fact, if you look at the show that's written for every fall, that's done by my staff in cooperation with Cordova. The teachers that are there, that assist the band director, are alumni or members of my staff as well.
Jim?
So we're doing what we can to bring this back in the community.
And I think a lot of us have seen, and obviously I know you well, but maybe explain a little bit more about, like how someone becomes a part of the Mandarin's and what that program is. That might be a little bit more helpful, too, because those students have, go back to their schools and help become leaders. And I can tell you what they're doing at McGarvey. And my son is in one of the beginning programs there, but they're actually facilitating and are providing the instructors for beginning music, for choir, for a lot of the programs that are being done down there.
That's true.
But maybe kind of expand, kind of beyond just being a band, what are you?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Our whole approach is that we're starting musicians at elementary school level. So we're taking them at nine, 10, 11 years old. And through that, getting them started with actual instruments in their hand. From there, they move on to middle school and we have what's called the Mandarin's Academy, which is in conjunction with the School of Music at Sac State. And together with that, we have programs that range from 13 to 18. At that point, they're able to move into our Mandarin's Drum and Bugle Corps, which this year, we're projecting to be in the top 10 of all of the worldwide drum and bugle corps. So we're really a very, very high-level performing group. Many of those students become music educators. And so they're going to Sac State and getting their music education degrees. From that, we bring them in as music directors, which then go back into the elementary schools and teach those programs. So you see this is, it's a circular growth opportunity here. And it's all through the partnership of the elementary schools, especially the high schools, and also at Sac State. And so with that, we're there to really raise the level of arts education.
Super. Well, let's say thank you and we'll refocus the discussion. Bob?
With the problems that seem to be showing up at the middle school, is it the kids don't have instruments? I know the ones there at middle school, excuse me, at elementary school, a lot of them are provided with an instrument. They don't have it themselves. Once they go to the middle school, is that where they no longer have the instruments provided for them?
You know, actually, a lot of what we see is in middle school, it's a scheduling conflict.
Yeah.
So they need to take honors classes and they're limited in how many electives that they have. And it forces them to choose between continuing on in music or taking some other class that's there.
Okay, because I was just curious about that, because you know, sometimes that's one of the main problems is that the instrument is not there. Kids are very good when they have the instrument, but then it's cut and they can no longer do it.
Yeah. I can tell you, with my experience as a school board member and even as somebody who played the clarinet and was lead clarinet in elementary school, as soon as I got to middle school, though, I had Pop Warner after school. I had, you know, other honors programs and other things like that. And it was like, you choose between sports or something else when you're in elementary school. I didn't play after-school sports. At least in my elementary, they didn't offer that. You get to middle school and then you have all of these competing things that you've got to start to pick some of them. And if you're doing year-round sports, music is something that's.
This continues to be a problem in high school, too.
Yeah. But that's, it's interesting because the captive audience, you know, so many kids end up doing music in elementary, which is fantastic. But when everything starts to compete, as you start to make choices of what you're going to do with your evenings, lots of kids just move out of.
And still do homework.
Yeah.
Jim, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So let's go back to the initial question and give staff a sort of a straw vote, yes or no, in terms of allowing bingo parlors and repealing Chapter 4.28.
So I'll start. I mean, I was the one who asked to have this conversation, so I'm in support of it. And I think even to go back to Councilmember Sanders or David's comment about, does this supplant local nonprofits that might be doing it? They're already like 1,000 feet from the city. So the fact that most of the people going to their bingo hall are already from our residence, if that's our first operator and what they're offering, I see great promise in that. But I think, limit the use for now, so repeal it and say kind of like what we were talking about even with cannabis, keep it to two and let's see. And if, you know, we start to have some sort of heavy regulatory.
Okay, let's go around and get the rest of it. And then we'll just come back and discuss the detail issues. Garrett, is a thumbs up. David?
I'd be interested in allowing it with some considerations of other restrictions, I guess.
Okay.
I would lean towards a yes, I think, at this point, but I would still have some concerns to address.
Okay. Bob?
Well, I think the one or two we were talking about and then see how that goes. As long as it wouldn't cause a problem with the ones that are already there. I don't know how many we have, really, not many.
Right, I know. So, okay, so I'm a yes on that. So actually, would one of you, you said we have four active licenses? And obviously, one's the Moose and one's the Elks. What are the other two licenses? Do you know?
Mobile Home Park Associations.
Okay, like the Mobile Country Club or?
Right. And so those are just to allow them to do them as an incidental use to their primary use.
Right. Okay, so, okay, so we have direction on allowing them. And do you want to articulate the, how does, so I have where, how many, and the zoning or the location? And what is Chapter 4.26 and how does that, how does that affect this discussion?
Chapter 4.26 talks about the bingo games themselves and how they're run and operated. So the hours that they can do them, how many games per week. So that doesn't just impact the bingo parlors. It also impacts these nonprofits that do them as an incidental use.
Right.
So that itself is very old and outdated. It has not been looked at or amended since the city adopted that upon a corporation, so it needs a good read-through. So what our recommendation would be is to read through that and update it as needed.
Okay, and so you did, there was something about the game couldn't last any longer than six hours or something. There's a different slide about that.
Correct. So they're limited to six hours per bingo session. And a bingo session is when the first ball drops to the final payout.
Yeah, for sure.
And they're limited to, for these incidental bingo gaming, it's one time a week versus if you were a primary bingo parlor, you may have one or two games every day. So that's the difference between the two.
Okay, so what's Title 23?
Title 23 is zoning. So if you are going to give the direction, then what we would want to do in Title 23 is just them and the land use table to show where these uses are permitted and not permitted. There won't be any other regulations in there, per se. Anything that's related to buffers, distance requirements, we would put that in 4.28.
Okay. So, all right, so in terms of whether there should be a restriction on the number, it's like the electronic billboards we have permitted to, card rooms we have permitted to. And we've formalized that in our code. And so Bob has expressed a comfort level with two. Does anybody else have a thought?
Yeah, I would think, let's say for two years, and we can choose to revisit it, but for two years, it's two. And then we can see if this is costing us money. I think we heard from Jim that the county pretty much took an action that this is not costing them money. Therefore, they don't need to be collecting a fee. I think if after a while we realize this is costing us money, then maybe we want to revisit that and the number and how do we scale it so that we can have cost recovery at a?
Okay, so let's talk, anybody else number different from two? Okay, so location, zoning or specific places we would not want to see them? And I don't mean in terms of 1,000 feet from schools and parks, but obviously you don't want it in residential zone. Okay.
I would think, and probably working with the applicant and economic development, to identify appropriate places where we would and wouldn't want to see them. But I would imagine light industrial areas, probably not in the business park here. But, you know, whether that's Horn Road or some of our other light industrial areas that we flexed for breweries and other things like that would probably fit.
Okay, so my suggestion would be probably something like the office industrial zone, but not light and heavy industrial. Because we want to make sure, like the Horn Road, the mill station, not Horn, the Mill Station Road discussion, we want to make sure that we're hanging on to our prime industrial properties because they are extremely, we have a very low vacancy rate. It's down to like 2% or 3%.
Yeah. Yes, your definition is correct, but I was thinking office space over like Horn Road and places like that would be the more appropriate.
I think that's Office Industrial Park, OIPD or something like that. Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, one of those. Okay, anything else, other concerns? I mean, about the zoning or the look, the zoning.
I guess you have to have some consideration about the economic development potential or stifling potential of these sorts of organizations. I don't really have an opinion one way or the other. I could see that they might be of assistance, but you could also see a long-term, you know, purchased property sort of stagnating a neighborhood because it's unable to develop.
Well, or, but, but look at, for instance, look at, there just happened to be three buildings on the freeway over by Bradshaw off of Business Park Drive that I'm very familiar with. It was called California Workspace and now they're just brown. And I don't think those buildings have had tenants for six years, you know? It's like we've got some.
I'm thinking more about like something along Folsom Boulevard.
Yeah.
Might be problematic.
Yeah. Or.
Or it might be stimulative. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, traditionally, these are large facilities and you're talking about some things that there's not a retail use anymore for that kind of stuff. I mean, luckily, we've landed some gyms and things like that to, you know, for some of them.
Right.
But a lot of them, there's never going to be a use except for something like this.
Which we don't need. So does anybody, Darcy or Jeff, in your experience, what's the average size, square footage, 20,000, 30,000?
They could vary depending on the size of the charity and the amount of players that they allow.
Kurt, do you have a?
10,000?
Okay, at Mayhew currently. Okay. Yeah, okay. So, and the issue of fee, I know Cyrus has some comments about fees.
The only request I have, I think the council should allow some flexibility for some cost recovery because we have no idea how much of a draw this would be on city finances. So I request that we provide some level of flexibility in any type of regulation that we, so we can recover the cost.
I think that's fine. The only thing is, kind of citing the speaker's comment, was that the county sounded like they were the only ones collecting that fee statewide. So if no other jurisdiction, and again, I don't know the validity of that comment, but if there is a need for cost recovery, especially with the licensing, I'm fine with. The regulatory side of it, I think a lot of it, I'm guessing, if you're not going out to do annual audits of them to make sure that you're collecting your 2%, you probably don't have as much work to do after the issuing of the license. But I'd acquiesce to staff on that one. But again, if we weren't charging a fee, we shouldn't need to be doing our own audits and a lot of other things.
So we could entertain a proposal from staff on that. David, in terms of, and Donald, in terms of conjunctive use of parking, the only one I know anything about is Mayhew and it's only because I knew the guy who was like the general manager originally. But in the Mayhew Tech Center, that project was built by Bill Cook with enough parking so that the bingo parlor could operate without impacting the parking needed for the other tenants, the other occupants of the buildings over there. So I'm not aware that it's ever been a problem.
Not over there. When I ran for school board, that was my campaign office was there. And no one's there on the weekends and after National University left, there's no one at night. So, I mean, I think most of that building's vacant now.
Pretty much vacant, yeah. Okay.
But I would imagine, I mean, and yeah, I think we have good examples. Claim Stake does have an impact. They open early at some points and it is tough. But this is the kind of conversations that we've been wanting to engage in, is these flex uses so that it's busy in the day and it's busy at night. Because still, one of our biggest struggles for landing restaurants and night activities is there's not enough people here at night with disposable income.
Absolutely. Okay, so comments from staff on any other issues that we need to provide direction on?
I think it would be helpful if we could have staff to summarize their understanding of the council's motion or direction.
Sure. So what staff heard is that. So what staff heard is that the council does not want to continue prohibiting bingo parlors as a primary use. So we will retain Chapter 4.28, but we will provide amendments to that to address the number of two for the first two years. Location is stay away from our light and heavy industrial, so probably looking at an office industrial mixed-use type zone. In terms of fees, is that you'll be looking for a proposal from staff for some sort of fee cost recovery. And we will be reviewing and amending Chapter 4.26 bingo games as well as Title 23, the land use table.
Okay. Anybody think of anything else?
Any objections to that direction?
I'm sorry?
Are there any council objections to that direction?
No, they're not. So we'll close the public hearing and ask if we're ready for a motion.
I'll move the other.
As identified by planning staff?
Yep.
Second.
Okay.
Do we actually need a motion? Are we giving staff direction to come back with a proposal?
A motion is fine. You can also do it per the prior statement I made, but a motion is absolutely fine and welcome. And it would be exactly as the mayor stated to move as staff just summarized.
Fair enough.
Call the rule. Thank you. Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvie?
Aye.
Mayor Budge? Yes. Thank you. Okay, item carries, thank you very much. We'll look forward to what you all come back with.
Thank you.
Okay, item 12.3. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I will move through this item quickly. For quite some time, the City Attorney's Office has been preparing what started as really a top-10 list of our review of the major new laws that had been adopted. We started going through the various documents that the council received and trying to pick out which of the dozens and dozens, in many cases, of new state laws are most applicable to and relevant to you, and also to regularly work with staff to remind folks of the specific things that they had to come into compliance with or that we had to do a new ordinance for, change a policy for, and that sort of thing. We thought that this year, rather than just sending you the memo, would be welcome for us to spend just a few minutes summarizing and highlighting it for you tonight. So with that, just highlighting a couple, a couple points, I would, moving to page two, the one item on the Political Reform Act that is of some interest is AB 551 extends the prohibitions regarding former post-employment restrictions to clarify that they apply to independent contractors, not just former employees. There's a new law that we'll be complying with regarding where the links to agendas would be posted so that it's more transparent and user-friendly. One thing that is important for some HR departments and also consultants who participate in recruiting is the new history, the new salary history prohibitions that limit our ability to ask folks what they made in prior jobs. I would note that one reference there is not just to AB 450, but it should also be to AB 168. Similarly, a new similar prohibition regarding asking folks about their conviction history. Another thing on the next page that we'll be addressing ourselves to is the amounts that are chargeable by the city for solar energy permits, again, supporting, that follows a series of steps that have been taken by the legislature over the last number of years to support the establishment and proliferation of the solar energy industry. A potentially important one for public safety, on page four, the new requirement at the top of the page, SB 442, requiring that building permits issued for pools or spas have at least two of seven specified drowning safety devices, further protections for community members from the dangers of drowning and other pool-related accidents. One, further down, one thing that we'll be working with the Public Works Department on relating to design professionals indemnifications, there's been a variety of more in the area generally of interest to the lawyers and public works professionals, but limiting the kinds of indemnifications and protections you can provide to cities with respect to design professionals and what we can hold them accountable for and not accountable for. I will skip the extensive new regulation on cannabis. We covered that very extensively in the series of hearings that we had on that topic. A little something, there's keen interest on the council on local business licensing and regulation. I've included a brief statement about the new laws affecting the applicants and charges for business licensing fees. We've spent quite a bit of time talking about new technologies and new forms of transportation. On page, on the same page below, we highlight a few changes that have been made in revenue and tax laws with respect to ride-sharing transportation network companies like Uber and Lyft that require them to obtain business licenses to operate unless the driver's domiciled in the jurisdiction and operated for more than 30 days, trying to clarify when they do and do not need to be licensed with local business licenses. I do certainly expect that we'll see more clarifications in ride-sharing and that sort of regulation. I would note anecdotally that the Public Works Director and I are spending quite a bit of time starting to noodle on the long-term changes that are likely to be necessary for ours and other cities as a result of the new transportation technologies that are kind of starting to trickle online. That's, of course, a longer discussion.
Yeah, before you go on, could you go back up to see, what is a certified access specialist? What in the world is that talking about?
I'm sorry.
Under local business license fee?
I believe that that is a program that addresses, I believe it's for handicapped accessibility and ADA-related programming.
So whereas we have one of the best specialists around, is it mandating that every jurisdiction hire one?
It could also mean a city designating an existing staff member. It doesn't necessarily mean hiring one.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Further down on page five, some additional transparency laws having to do with the interest rates that are actually charged, the total costs of public financing when it's done as a result of bond issuance. One of the things that's occasionally come up as an issue is does the public really understand the cost of debt acquisition and bond finance and that sort of thing? On the next page, there has been some clarification to an outstanding issue on Prop 218 about whether or not, and to what extent, certain different kinds of services are exempt from the requirement for voter approval. And this SB 231 makes clear that stormwater fees increases are included within the definition of sewer for purposes of an applicable exemption. Further down on that page and continuing on onto the next page, there have been a series of, and certainly as Mr. Terry is and others are very, very well aware who work in the industry, very active legislative activity on, over the years, on housing. And there are a number of laws that I won't go into detail on, but generally tighten up the impacts of the city, the requirements of the city, and the penalties and consequences on the city to actions that we would take that might restrict the availability of housing for all income levels, for multifamily developments. And in general, will tend to be imposing greater consequences on us for not fully meeting our obligations or for restricting access to or the availability of housing. I think both SB 35 and AB 72 are of note and something we'll be working closely on with the Planning Department. Similarly, SB 167, restricting the city's ability to deny, reduce, or make infusible housing development projects and providing additional notice requirements and that sort of thing. And with that, I think it will conclude my remarks. And again, we hope that this is somewhat helpful. We have gotten good feedback from staff over the years, and we will double back with folks from time to time in the middle of the year to make sure that people are doing what's on their checklist to do for new compliance.
Okay, questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. Then we are coming to the end of our meeting, and we will ask if there are any requests for future agenda items. So I have one, considering the, lots of discussion around the proposal from Golden State Water to raise their rates and the 26% increase. I wondered if maybe we would invite Paul Schubert or Sean Twilla in to discuss the rate increase, like a, you know, like a five or 10-minute presentation during the presentation section and ask them to talk about it. This particular notice that the PUC put out, or actually Golden State put out, it doesn't indicate that there's a cutoff date for comments, and I'm sure there is, but it would be really nice if one of them came and talked about why it's 26% initially and then much smaller amounts down the way. So, if everybody agrees? Okay. All right. So at this point, we are going to adjourn to closed session, and I think we're supposed to ask Stacy or Adam to read the topics of closed session.
So there are two items for closed session. The first one is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, pending litigation in one case pursuant to Government Code 54956 dot 1D1, people of the State of California by and through Adam U. Lindgren, City Attorney for the City of Rancho Cordova versus Jack A. McGuire and Margaret Y. McGuire, Superior Court of California, County of Sacramento, Case Number 34 dash 2017 dash 00206 453 dash CU dash PO dash GDS. The second item is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation in one potential case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956 dot D2, claimant Mickel McIntyre family.
Okay, super. Then we will adjourn to closed session, and we will do that in memory of the late Jack Seibert. So, thank you all very much.